Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the regular meeting of the City of Delray Oaks City Council. It's Tuesday, December 18th at 6:00. If you may have both of all please.
Councilor Allian.
Here.
Councilor Lutell.
Here.
Councilor Depple.
Here.
Vice Mayor Park.
Here.
Mayor Coolidge.
Here. I would ask Councilmember Dennis Allen that he would give this to the council leaders.
Right. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, I would ask our Reverend Bob Hill, our current Church of Delray Oaks.
Well, thank you for this Christmas season that you represent. Thank you for this city council and these citizens in this wonderful city. Please bless this meeting with your wisdom and your guidance. Thank you for your presence here. Amen.
I would ask the council's forbearance. We had, I'd like to add to the agenda this morning of Mr. Joey Hallack, our newest planning commissioner, his mother is in town today and would like to see his son, her present sworn in and if the council agrees, we will, we will agendize that right after the swearing in of Officer Michelle Ball. Everybody on board?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, council. Very important for the family. Next, we have the staff reports. City manager report first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city experiences worse significant range recently and windstorms. Stormwater runoff didn't cause any significant flooding thanks to the efforts from our public works staff. Ron Pucci back there, thank you, Ron. His work to clear our storm drains and creek all the way from the Frog Pond to Safeway. Four trees fell near Delray Gardens Center on, that night. Trail was reopened soon thereafter, thanks again to the quick work by, by Public Works. Public Works continued to clear our public walkways and placed waddles at the top of Highland Street to prevent the stormwater runoff, to help absorb it in the PGEs easement along Mescal. Public Works installed a railroad tied stairway in the Rosetta Triangle to one of our newly installed benches in coordination with the Citizens Action Group. Public Works repaired a playground ladder in our park and beautified the island in Delray Garden Drive in our light industrial area. I attended an annual two-day strategic planning session of our risk management pool, Monterey Bay Area Self Insurance Agency. Board decided on the amount of increase for our workers' compensation and liability insurance premiums due to the increase in the size of our police department. It was a smaller increase than we had expected, which was, which was fantastic. Staff attended seminar on PERS in Monterey to learn more about the status of PERS and how agencies are dealing with keeping their retirement system funded while they provide city services. Presentation reinforced our beliefs that the city should establish an investment vehicle such as a Section 115 trust to help fund the unfunded liability. Staff will present a recommendation to council in February or March. Tamsi held an initial four tag stakeholder meeting here in our council chambers. Tamsi expects to conduct outreach meetings with our residents beginning in February. The Monterey Bay Area Defense Alliance held breakfast for 60 community leaders. The MPS Center for Homeland Defense and Security provided a presentation. Integral Innovations and great news about some of our local businesses. Integral Innovations, one of our cannabis manufacturing businesses, was recently ranked number 11 in the state in their category. Their projected gross sales are expected to double in the next 18 months, which would significantly increase the city's cannabis revenues. Our challenge will of course be to keep them in the city as they grow and acquire more space. Monterey Herald published an opinion piece by resident Frank Conti concerning the outstanding service Seaside Fire provided him when he was faced with potential flooding his home. Thank you to Seaside Fire for committed service to our residents of Delray Oaks. Similarly, our PD continues, our police department continues to serve our community with distinction. The expansion of our police department is going faster and better than planned, allowing us to assist our neighborhood watch volunteers, investigate crimes, and charge those responsible more rapidly and more effectively. Santa arrived last weekend at our DRO Santa's workshop in style with our police department cruiser with lights and sirens and was greeted by a flock of children and adults alike. A huge thank you to the volunteers of the Delray Oaks Citizens Action Group for setting that up, putting it on and tearing down a wonderful, a wonderful workshop for our children. In flight, Frank, and lastly, to Mayor Edlin and Councilmember Allen. Gentlemen, on behalf of the city staff, I want to thank you for your decades of service to this city and for your generous and kind attitude towards the city staff. Thank you. Mayor, please mark.
I think you do. Great report as usual, Councilmember Allen.
Thank you. The Monterey Regional Waste Management District, we continue to work towards achieving all those things I listed in other meetings with regard to the landfill operations. And the recent and very interesting development is the city of Salinas is withdrawing. They sent a letter to the Salinas Valley Recycles and after many, many decades of being with Salinas Valley Recycles, they're withdrawing from that so that they can bring their trash and recyclables to the Monterey Regional Waste Management District landfill. Johnson Canyon facility down in Salinas Valley is very limited in capacity. The city of Salinas is obviously much the largest, with 150 some thousand people, it's the largest contributor for that landfill and they are looking for, what are they going to do for the future? So with the brand-new MRF that we have, the materials will be recycled. We're hoping it achieves greater than 75% recycling material so that only 25% of what you pick up is going to go into the landfill. And it will actually cost them less money. So they have to give a year's notice and a year from now, there'll be significant additional income as a result of that coming into the landfill and we'll put it to good use. Is this where I get the thank you or is that later?
Later.
Okay. I'll wait for later then for the thank you.
Thank you. There you go. Councilmember Allen.
Thank you. First of all, thanks to Kim and Karen for such a wonderful staff Christmas party. It was enjoyed by all and a great tribute to Jerry and to Dennis. Also, thanks to Kim and Karen for the beautiful cake for tonight, which sang me all the arrangements for. What would we do without you guys?
I attended as an alternate the MST board meeting. There was a recognition of many at that meeting. First of all, the December Employee of the Month, Miguel Vargas, and the retirement of, after 31 years of service of Dan Newman, and the recognition of member service, Carolyn Hardy and Ken Keneo. The board approved a performance incentive for Carlos Sadoric. He's done an outstanding job as CEO of MST and the board approved for his incentive. We adopted a resolution 2019-16, appointing Kelly Halcon to the board of directors of the California Transit Insurance Corps for the coming year. The federal transit administration station mandated an increase in the random drug testing rates effective January 1 of 2019. Now the required testing is 25% and it's been up to 50% of all covered employees. We awarded a contract to Granite Rock in the amount of $93,812 to construct a new gas bus rapid transit station on the corner of Fremont and Hammond. The original project did not include these stops. And we approved the expansion of the MST RISE Special Transportation Service area and that was all funded by Mesge Q. Seaside sanitation. New officers were elected and Jerry Blatt-Walter is the chair, I am the vice first vice chair, and John Lizard the second vice chair. Approved a contract with Monterey Municipal Engineering, the amount not to exceed $1,683,200 for lift station upgrades on Rosetta, Military, and Del Monte. Also approved an amendment to a professional services agreement not to exceed $8,035 for the preparation of a survey for the Canyon Delray Boulevard and sewer replacement project. And approved the master taxing entity agreement in order to receive funds related to the contemplated sale of property at Bay Shore Black Forest. Community improvement services meeting was canceled. So that saved two minutes if you're listening to. Delray Oaks Citizens Action Group. I attended the decorating party on December 7 and those who arrived expecting to really be put to work were shocked. To our surprise, most of the work was done. Terrence and Sandy Shelby had been there on Thursday night and had done almost everything. We had a tree and a couple of things to hang, but they had really taken care of the authority in the decorating. We finished it up, we enjoyed pizza, and we enjoyed good conversation. Santa's workshop, as you know, mentioned, was a tremendous success thanks to the many volunteers. There were more children than we've ever had before and they just really, they enjoy it. They love to see Santa coming in their police car. They love making decorations and cookies before he arrives. And of course, they love sitting on Santa's knee and giving their lateness of "I want". Thanks to all the volunteers for the cake. Appreciate it. Dennis.
Yes.
I enjoy working with you. You've been an outstanding councilman. You well represented Delray Oaks on all the boards of the Monterey Regional Waste Management District, the Monterey One, as well as serving on the Monterey Insurance Fund. Your complete reports on the activities of these boards has always been most informative. Your representation on the Delray Budget Committee has been invaluable. I was always, it's a great company and was always very dependent on your research and all. And I'm happy that you will continue supporting the budget for the city. We need you. You've always been dedicated and made the decisions which you felt were the best for your residents and the city. Thank you, Dennis, for your 18 years of service. To the city of Delray Oaks, I will wish you, yes, working with you and having you alongside you, wishing you luck.
Thank you, ma'am.
Jerry. You're next on my list. It's been an honor serving with you, Council Jerry. After thorough and complete research you've always done, what is best for the residents and the city. You are honest, dedicated, and caring, giving so much of your time. 22 years of serving our wonderful city. You have been a great ambassador for Delray Oaks and all the boards in which you serve. Under your leadership as mayor, the city has advanced. Financially stable with the first-ever reserve fund, changing city called leadership, the city manager and the police department, to mention only a couple. You are so well-respected in the peninsula. Your honesty and integrity is not to be surpassed. Not only will I miss you, but the city will miss you and your knowledgeable decisions in making Delray Oaks the most desirable community in the peninsula in which to live. History will show that you have been the best mayor ever in Delray Oaks and it will be prudent that in the future, no one will exceed your leadership and dedication. You will always remain the best mayor. Thank you, Jerry, for everything you've done.
Thank you, ma'am. I much appreciate it. Normally, we're going to save all these comments until near the end, but one has got interrupted Pat, the panel. She goes smarter than anybody else on the council, so I let her go, but it's a matter of survival. So if you want to save comments for the end, Dennis, we're going to do our swan song and tap dance on the way out of here. Next, Vice Mayor Park.
Yeah, I don't believe, thank you, Pat, for filling in. It's important when you not make a meeting to have your alternate serve for you because we need to represent it. So thank you, Pat. I've been ill, I was out of town and then I visited the grandchildren and came back ill. So I'm just getting over it, but thank you and I was unable to attend Santa's workshop either, also. I heard it was really good and I saw, I saw the, as I overlooked the whole canyon, I saw Santa waving and the sirens were going, so it was, it was really nice. Thank you to the police department for your involvement with, with the Citizens Action Group. Very much appreciated.
Thank you, and Councilmember Depple.
Since I've not been appointed to any committees yet, I have nothing to report. I wish everybody in there a very merry Christmas and a happy opening year.
We're saving you for a strategic server.
That's scary.
Scary for the opposition. Just real fast, we, the only meeting I've attended recently is worth noting, is the Board of Newness Authority Board and Directors meeting last Friday. To summarize, I made a motion to accept the more staff recommendation transition plan, which protects Delray Oaks' dentures. It's wide, it's vague enough where we come up with individual agreements between ourselves and the other annuals for our stations. First time in 20-something years, my plan had two substitute motions. I had, I made my motion to second it, then it was a substitute motion, it was seconded, then another substitute motion, it was seconded. The other two substitute motions were shot down in flames, mine passed 11 to 2. Both Maria reps are voting against the motion. The second vote will take place tomorrow at 4 o'clock before our vice mayor will be there to take the second vote. So again, that staff recommendation is the best of the three alternatives to protect Delray Oaks' interests and ensure our various interests go forward. And report, next we have a consent agenda. Does any member of the council wish to pull any items for questions of discussion? Saying none, not the public, any members of the public wish to pull any items from the consent agenda for questions of discussion? Saying none, coming back to the council, entertain a motion. No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, please.
The two corrections, item C2 and C3, because I opposed the ordinance, I did not oppose the ordinance. I was just surprised that it was, walked back to it when I thought it was on there all along. So I did not oppose it.
Okay. Any other members of the public wish to make any corrections or ask questions? Saying none, entertain a motion that the consent agenda, the approved with the corrections on item C2 was indicated by a speaker.
You have to approve.
Do you have a motion?
Second.
Second, any other discussion on the motion? Saying none, only the figure signal I say an aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, motion Jerry Depple, thank you very much. Okay, next, we have presentations and proclamations. We'll start off with the swearing in. Officer Michelle Ball, I turn it over to our city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it over to our city police chief, conducted this morning. Chief. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mayor, City Council, first. I'd like to welcome everybody, especially all the officers present today and all the families, which is probably the biggest family turnout we've had. For our newest officer, Michelle Ball, thank you for coming and showing your support. We really appreciate it to those citizens who came today. As the city manager said earlier, our police department is doubling in size and it's going faster and better than anyone could have thought. Although, please don't walk back in our offices right now because it's torn up. We're making new offices and moving things all over the place, but that's a good sign. It means that we're moving forward. And tonight, I'm extremely excited to swear on our newest officer, Michelle Ball. She's a former full-time Watsville police officer. She comes with police experience and life experience and maturity that's really important in the police officers that we want working here in the city of Delray Oaks so that they take the right perspective and the right balance between community service and education and enforcement. She was also a reserve officer for the city of Scotts Valley, California until 2007. So she's been gone a little bit, but now she's back doing what she wants to do and that's part of the reason she's back here in the city of Delray Oaks, to have that opportunity. She's married to Scotts Valley Sergeant David Ball, who's also here today. Thank you for coming, David. And present with them tonight are their two daughters. Is it Christine? All right, good, I didn't say Chris tonight. I saw the E at the end. And Caitlin. And their two granddaughters, Brooklyn and Kinley. And their son-in-law, Clint. Officer Ball and her family reside in Hollister and they've lived there for the last 10 years. So I am going to ask Michelle to come on up here and take the oath of office and I'm going to put the oath of office in this binder because I'm going to fill the city manager request and do this by rote. So Michelle, if you'll go ahead and raise your hand, or if you have to be, I state your name.
I, Michelle Ball.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
To support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Okay, so, oh, thank you. Against all enemies foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies foreign and domestic.
And to bear true faith and allegiance.
And to bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I will bow tenor.
Upon which I will bow tenor.
So as is tradition, when a new officer gets sworn in, they have a badge pinned in hand tonight. It's David's turn to pin his life's badge on, so David will come on. City manager, thank you very much.
Absolutely, thank you. Great work, thanks. And next, we have the swearing in of our newest planning commissioner, Joey Hallack. I'll turn it over to the city manager. All right, I'll turn it over to our city manager.
I don't have the right. Please raise your hand, or if you have to be. I, City Manager.
I, Jeremy Hallack.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies foreign and domestic.
That I bear true faith and allegiance.
That I bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And to the Constitution of the State of California.
And to the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well.
And that I will well.
And faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which.
The duties upon which.
I will bow tenor.
I will bow tenor.
Congratulations.
Ladies and gentlemen, what we're going to do next is we have two proclamations, one for Councilor Allian, one for myself. We're going to have outside agency presentation and comments regarding to Dennis and myself. And then I would ask everybody to hold their comments, although any public presentation of folks here or outside agencies, we'll save that for the end. Otherwise, we'll be going back and forth, back and forth, as soon as sufficient is possible. So we'll start off with the proclamation for Councilmember Allen. Dennis, if you join in, be on the welcome. It's my honor and my sadness, in a way, to give the proclamation of the city of Delray Oaks to Dennis Allian for as many years of service. I'll read it out to everybody. Proclamation, appreciation, dedicated service to the city of Delray Oaks by Dennis Allian. Whereas the city council serves as the elected governing legislative body for the city of Delray Oaks and whereas the planning commission serves as the appointed body for the city of Delray Oaks responsible for all matters of land use and whereas Dennis Allian served as a planning commissioner from 1995, before some of you were born, through 2000, a city council member from 2006 to 2018, and whereas Mr. Allian served in the Delray Oaks Budget Committee, Monterey Bay Insurance Fund, and on the boards of the Monterey Regional Waste Management District and Monterey One Water, and whereas Mr. Allian is a member of the Institute of Management Accountants as a certified management accountant, and whereas Mr. Allian's dedicated service was characterized by loyal representation of the residents of Delray Oaks and the city's best interests, thoughtful deliberation of policy, stewardship of our taxpayer dollars, and a commitment to transparent and accountable government, and whereas Mr. Allian served as a sound, steady member of the council through some of the city's most challenging financial times and sought through to a positive, stable course, and whereas he can always be depended upon to engage actively and constructively, particularly on budget matters, ready to work collaboratively with fellow council members to achieve the appropriate outcome for the city and those who live, work, and visit our city. Now therefore, I, Mayor Jerry Edlin, on behalf of the city council of the city of Delray Oaks, would hereby acknowledge with deep appreciation Dennis Allian's 18 years of commitment and highly professional service to the region of the city of Delray Oaks. In witness thereof, I have here unto set my hand and cause a seal to the city of Delray Oaks in place this April 3rd, December 2018. Dennis, outstanding, right?
Is this my comment time?
Yeah, yeah, your time, yeah.
Okay. Well, I gotta pull up this list. First of all, there's less people to thank. Number one are the citizens of Delray Oaks who for all those years placed their trust in me to do, be your representative and try and do the right things that you wanted done, as well as those things that you didn't want done probably for the best interest of the city. So thank you again for all those years of trusting me. Also want to thank the Delray Oaks Police Department, the ones that Paul met. I told the story the other night, in 2000, I took a job in Saudi Arabia and I had to meet the planning commissioner one time. Took this job in Saudi Arabia and just got into Saudi Arabia and set on in to my office in there and getting into the gist of things. I got this telephone call from my wife Teresa that our house had been broken into. She came home from work, found some things in disarray in the house. And again, the story is, the first thing she thought of was getting out of the house and calling George Gash. But the second thing was that the police department got there in a matter of a few minutes and the now commander, Chris Brooklyn, did an outstanding job. The young man was eventually found and arrested for a certain time in jail and taken back. But that was just a tiny example of what our police department has done. I can still remember the day that the police department captured the fellows that banked up the Wells Harbor Bank down there. And it turns out, they were people that the city of Salinas and other police departments have been chasing for some time and never been able to capture, but we got. So we have always had some very outstanding police services. I have not yet, and I don't, I don't look forward to the day when I have I have not yet, and I don't look forward to the day when I have to do the call and they come healthy and get back on the bed. They do that on a routine basis. This is an exceptional group of people we have running our police department. I also want to thank every member of the city council, particularly Jerry and Kristen, who all those years serving together, who worried about living, having to pay rent, turn on the lights, et cetera. So we've come a long way, thank you. And I want to thank the city staff, you know. I just am amazed at how you have handled the job over all the years. You've certainly matured with it wonderfully. And Karen, first, Karen, thank you so much for being this delightful person, always having a great attitude. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you to Alex. Thanks for coming on to this council and being our attorney. Your professionalism is outstanding. You've needed somebody like you for a long time, we got you. Thank you. Dino? Thank you. The great things for the City of Delray Oaks have just now started happening, thanks to you. Your professionalism is incredible. We are so fortunate to have this gentleman because our city may have, you know, when you have somebody who has a purpose-driven life, he comes in, he knows what he wants to do, he consults with people, he inspires people to get their jobs done. The staff is delighted to work for somebody like Dino. We are, this is truly a great man, we don't know how lucky we are. He knows how what he is because he's here. For somebody that's not here today, number one to thank, and that was Mary Poppins. You know, for years and years, there was nobody in this room except for Mary Poppins, and I can't remember. Nobody in this room. So it's delightful to see all these people here who saw more interest in what's going on in the city. But for many years, we had nobody here, nobody. Nobody showed up. Elaine would be here, Marwich, you'd be here, Patrick. But it was always Mary Poppins and none. So, John, thank you. You don't know what you've done for me. Maybe in a few months, you'll appreciate it. I think I already thanked Jerry and Kristen, outstanding leadership over all these years. Thank you so much for that. And the final person is my wife, lovely wife Teresa. Thank you so much for standing behind me and supporting me, behind every good man, including you. So thank you all.
Okay, we'll have public comments at the end, any comments you've got. But right now, just very quickly, since Dennis finished speaking, any councilmembers want to say something very quickly about Dennis? I'm sorry, could you? Oh, you already said it.
I'm glad you're my neighbor. And now we'll be able to talk, you guys worry about the rail acts. It's been great, you've done a great job. This has been a great council, and everybody has worked very well together, and it's really been a pleasure. And even when we disagree, we agree to disagree, and are very mature about it, and I appreciate that. So, thank you.
Dennis, thank you for your many years. Broke me into being a planning commissioner, and you kind of broke me into being a city council. But I forgive you. But thank you for all of your service, and I'm sorry that we're not going to be serving together for a long period of time.
Yeah, the only thing I can say, I echo everybody else's comments. What you all don't realize, we had a city Christmas party last Friday, and we had a chance, both Dennis and I. I spent much longer here thanking everybody, so I won't look the same thing over again. But one thing that wasn't said about Dennis, Dennis was the chair of the MRW PCA Mount and Salt Monterey One Water. And he was, I remember we had discussions about whether or not he'd be successful in negotiation with the farmers out in Salinas Valley to get the wastewater together. And after he said he would, I said, no way in hell, you know. And we were talking, he got it done. His chair, he was selected because of his leadership ability over there, made chair of MRWPCA, got the recycled water coming in here, and maybe the same year, we have a desolization plant going. But I mean, with recycled water and Monterey One, it's Dennis' leadership. People don't realize, we sit here, this is lighter than what we do. It's a representation of the local boards, agencies that affect the entire peninsula, not the entire county. And it's the leadership of Dennis, they want small cities, but rising on top of them, and a key player in Monterey One Water, made a difference. So, we're able to have water down the roads because of Dennis Alian and his leadership. So, again, thank you, Dennis, we appreciate it. Okay, we have a trouble date, we guess across the line. Oh, that's me.
Jerry. Whereas the city council serves as the elected governing legislative body for the City of Delray Oaks, and whereas the planning commission serves as the appointed body for the City of Delray Oaks responsible for all matters of land use, and whereas Mayor Edlin served as a planning commissioner from 1996 to 1998, a city council member from 1998 to 2004, vice mayor from 2004 to 2009, and mayor from 2009 to 2018. And whereas Mayor Edlin served as a board member and chair of the Fordord Reuse Authority, board member of the Monterey Peninsula Regional Water Authority and Seaside Basin Water Master, and whereas Mayor Edlin's dedicated service was characterized by loyal representation of the residents of Delray Oaks and the city's best interests, thoughtful deliberation of policy, stewardship of taxpayer dollars, and a commitment of transparent and accountable governance. And whereas, under Mayor Edlin's leadership, the city weathered the worst economic downturn in generations and started down the path to economic stability and security. And whereas Mayor Edlin was instrumental in the city's agreement to expand its city, the police department, to provide better law enforcement services to the city and the airport district at reduced cost. And now, therefore, I, Vice Mayor Kristen A. Clark, on behalf of the city council, everyone here. Do hereby acknowledge with deep appreciation Mayor Edlin's 22 years of commitment and highly professional service to the City of Delray Oaks. And witness thereof, I have here unto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Delray Oaks to be placed this 18th day of December.
Just a real quick comment. Again, during the Christmas party, I addressed everybody, from everybody up here in the police department, Kevin, Karen, everything else in detail, and you all heard what I said, and I say this is appreciated. The second one, Dennis, I need to say the same thing, although we've already heard it, so thank you. What I do want to say is, I'd like to make one short comment, and that is, Councilmember Dennis Alian, Vice Mayor Kristen Clark, and I entered the public service to serve our beloved city about 20 years ago. At that time, our city was essentially bankrupt. The Monterey Herald editorial advocating disincorporation of our city, which was titled, "Delray Oaks, Give It Up." I still have that in the house somewhere. We had that in the wall for a long time as a challenge to have the city go, because they wanted us disincorporated and moved to Seaside. We went through three public safety tax campaigns where we asked the residents to tax themselves in an attempt to raise enough money to keep the city afloat. Phil Nash, one of our former city managers, in fact, at the beginning of the time, there was no way our city could survive. He did the analysis and said, there's no way we could survive. And yet, Dennis, Kristen, and I, along with other members of our city council and staff, persevered, and our city's finances are now in the best shape ever. Speaking for the three of us, I can proudly state that we took the city from consultancy, from the initial position it is and sits today. We still have a way to go financially, okay? I mean, there's still money we owe, we have long-term debt, but the wolf is no longer at the door. The leadership that we have on the council coming up, with our city manager, and with the support of the folks here in the room, we're going to do very well. So that's what I had to say. Now, again, everybody else, I've had a chance to thank them again, and just echo what I said before, whatever my listeners said too. Okay, now we have, when we go into outside agency presentations and comments, any outside agencies want to make a presentation at all?
I will.
I see Ms. Sheri Damon Esquire of the Fordord Reuse Authority.
I have a nice plaque, do you want to come forward?
Oh, okay. You don't need to deal with head of it.
That was my secret. Why, here's a plaque and something else. So, I'm Sheri Damon, I work with the Fordord Reuse Authority. Michael Bullmard is the executive officer. He would be here, except he was in Washington negotiating for more money to finish the cleanup out here. So, important public business and beneficial to the citizens of not only Delray Oaks, but the entire Monterey Peninsula. And Jerry, it's been my great honor to work with you for the last two years. And I am going to read Resolution 1810. It is hereby resolved by the Fordord Reuse Authority Board of Directors that whereas Jerry Edlin has served as mayor of Delray Oaks since September of 2009, and whereas Mayor Edlin has served the Fordord Reuse Authority Board of Directors for more than a decade, serving as chair from 2015 to 2017. And whereas he has also served the region on the transportation agency for Monterey County, the Monterey Regional Water Authority, and many other boards and commissions and committees. And whereas Mayor Edlin graduated from Monterey High School, received a bachelor of science degree in engineering from the U.S. Military Academy at West Point. Wow. A master's degree in education from Stanford University. Wow. And a master's degree in business administration from Long Island University. Wow. And whereas, by the way, the whos were not on the other side. And whereas Mayor Edlin retired from the U.S. Army in 1992 as an airborne ranger lieutenant. I don't even have to go, wow, somebody else is doing it for me, that's great. Wow. Be awarded the Legion of Merit, double L. He currently serves as the vice division commander of the U.S. Coast Guard Auxiliary Sixth Division and as public affairs officer of Coast Guard Auxiliary District over in Northern California, Nevada, and Utah. And, let's see, whereas Mayor Edlin, despite having accumulated a robust collection of vehicles, exactly, is known to enjoy leisurely walks through forward trails and occasionally stopping to capture the scent of the local fauna, with a propensity to exaggerate his walks as a run. He also has accumulated a robust collection of motor vehicles, capable of going across forward, I might add. And whereas Mayor Edlin actively supported efforts to improve the lives of active-duty and retired military personnel and their families with his chairmanship of the FORA Veterans Issues Advisory Committee and the leadership in the development of the California Central Coast Cemetery and the General William H. Orley Medical Clinic. And whereas Mayor Edlin was instrumental in advancing former Fordord recovery projects and maintaining the City of Delray Oaks fiscal solvency, which we heard about. Wow. Now therefore be it resolved that the Fordord Reuse Authority Board of Directors expresses appreciation to Mayor Jerry Edlin through this resolution for his extraordinary contributions to the reuse of former forward and to the citizens of Monterey County, wishing him every success in all future endeavors. And by unanimous vote, Resolution 1810 was passed, one of three. Congratulations.
A lot of water. I'm Jim Cullum, I'm the executive director of the Monterey Peninsula Regional Water Authority. And on behalf of the Water Authority, I'd like to present a certificate of appreciation for outstanding service to Jerry Edlin, who had served since its inception in 2012. The Board of the Monterey Peninsula Regional Water Authority would like to extend its appreciation for the outstanding contributions you have made as a member of the Monterey Peninsula Regional Water Authority Board since February 2012. During that time, your many years of experience with water issues on the Monterey Peninsula have proved invaluable in the operations of the Authority Board and helped to inform the public on the workings of state agencies and jurisdiction over Calam and any new water supply for the peninsula. Furthermore, since July 2013, you served in the Authority as treasurer. And in addition to your duties in that capacity, you brought invaluable experience, expertise, and insight to the annual review and approval of the Authority audits. Your effort in that regard has resulted in outstanding order results since 2015. You can take great pride in having played a critical role in the eventual resolution of our water crisis and having well and faithfully served our community. As fellow mayors and authority directors, we want to thank you for a job well done and to wish you well in the future. And this is signed by Mayor Bill Camp, Mayor Ralph Rubio, Mayor Steve Dallas, Mayor Clyde Robertson, and Mayor Mary Ann Russell.
So, my name's Paul Shudo, I'm the general manager of Monterey One Water. You'll be very happy to know that I don't have a bunch of recitals and a big resolution. It's truly just a certificate of appreciation for all Dennis's hard work for a decade at Monterey One Water. Now, you know, certainly Dennis has brought, I've been very fortunate, since I've been there, Dennis has brought his financial acumen, pushing us here and there to make sure our infrastructure projects are done, as well as an HRI, which you, well, made me do, and actually got done. I was reviewing it today. So, I really appreciated Mayor Edlin's comments as well on Dennis's involvement in all the negotiations and discussions for Pure Water Monterey. But I also wanted to talk about the flip side of that point, where all the good he did with Monterey One Water and negotiations, he was also on the energy panel for me. So the reason you're all stuck with me right now is partially his fault. And I thank you so much for that, because to be involved in this community on projects like this of this importance and to be able to work with Dennis has been wonderful. And frankly, Jerry as an alternate, it was always a testament to the city of Delray Oaks that when Dennis wasn't able to make it, that someone as qualified as Jerry that understood water, understood all the nuances, was able to sit with Dennis and make intelligent, informed decisions. So, once again, we are very thankful as Monterey One Water to have Dennis on board, and thank you for everything.
I wanted to add a little bit to this with regard to the negotiations with the farmers. Jerry, you gave me way too much credit. Paul Shudo came in at a critical time in those negotiations. Farmers were essentially saying, hey, look, this is our water over here, you're not taking. Most of the water that, a lot of the water, not most, a lot of the water that they were using on their crops in the northern part of the Salinas Valley. And that was part of the Kesterville saltwater intrusion program. So, what that effort, of course, is to try and stop the saltwater from intruding into the aquifers at the northern valley. the aquifers at the northern part of the valley, and the farmers were very insistent that that was their water, and they weren't going to give up any of their water. Well, we entered into some very tough negotiations with them, where it took Paul's presence and David Stoll's presence to help persuade them that if they wanted to have the water that they have today, it was time to cooperate with us, and we wanted to be good partners with them. And thanks to Paul and David, and some tough negotiation by Ralph Rubio, we got there. Yes, I was the chairman of the board at the time, and I did my best to try and keep civility on the board in those discussions, but it was the invasion, the leadership, and the convincing nature of Paul Shudo that brought that part, and Paul, I really am glad that we did hire you, and that you did come down from here. Paul came down from Tahoe to come to Monterey, so thank you, yeah, thank you very much.
My name's Todd Nuck, I'm the deputy executive director at the Transportation Agency for Monterey County, and I'd like to read a certificate of appreciation that the board adopted for Jerry. Honorable Jerry Edlin, Transportation Agency for Monterey County, board member representing the city of Delray Oaks, whereas Mayor Jerry Edlin has represented the citizens of Delray Oaks and the interests of the entire Monterey County region on the Transportation Agency Board of Directors for 18 years, as a champion for increased transportation funding and support for investment in regional transportation improvements, whereas Mayor Edlin was a leader within the agency, having served on the agency's executive committee, and then becoming the agency chair in 2013, whereas Mayor Edlin represented the Transportation Agency as a board member for the California Association of Council of Governments, advocating for increased transportation funding, ensuring that Monterey County's transportation needs were addressed at the state level, whereas Mayor Edlin became a staunch supporter of the Ford Order Regional Trail of Greenway and safety improvements along Highway 218, Canyon Delray Boulevard corridor, whereas Mayor Edlin led the charge for the Transportation Agency to become a self-help county, to assure that the region obtained its fair share of state and federal matching funds, and was a key player on the team that secured passage of Measure X. Now therefore being declared on December 5th, 2018, the Transportation Agency for Monterey County sincerely appreciates the work of Mayor Jerry Edlin for inspiring regional transportation in Monterey County. Personally, I've worked with Jerry for 12 years now, and as an advocate for the region at the state level, and with your bona fides as a fiscal conservative in getting Measure X, which is a 3/8 of a cent level sales tax for transportation, you have paved the way for more pavement, in a good way, with the rehabilitation of local roads and projects that we have in the pipeline, starting next year with Benjim Parkway in Marina. We received a $19 million grant to match Measure X money, and we wouldn't have gotten that project started without you and your leadership, so thank you.
I know I speak for Dennis. Oh, I'm sorry.
All right, good evening. This is actually for you and Sherri and the president. So for those of you who don't know me, I am Lieutenant Colonel Jay Skarush, I am the squadron commander of the 214th Training Squadron up at Presidio, and Delray Oaks is our partner city, and it is with great thanks and appreciation that I wanted to present both of you gentlemen with a commander's challenge coin. Now, for those of you who don't know what a challenge coin is, it's a military tradition, and whether it started in World War I, like a shot down to an airman who then, you know, showed this coin that had his unit's emblem on it to a French garrison, and then was understood to be a U.S. service member and not a German spy, or whether it came to us later in the Vietnam conflict, it is a point of pride and a symbol of recognition, of inclusiveness, of brotherhood, and of excellence. Commander's coins have been given to mark special occasions, to identify members who have done something excellent, who have got out of their way, who have worked tirelessly, and you gentlemen have most certainly done that, and have made us feel incredibly welcome as a part of the Delray Oaks community, and I wanted to publicly thank you for all of you many members of the 214th. A challenge coin comes with it, of course, with the responsibilities of a challenge coin, which includes, you know, you don't want to drop it, because if you drop it, you have just challenged the entire room, which are their challenge coins, and if the entire room produces them, then you owe them drinks, and if they can't produce them, then they owe you drinks, which is part of the immoral part of the tradition, and of course, you know, I will, of course.
Take this apart.
Of course, as any military member, they are often collected and displayed in offices as a point of pride, and so I'm very pleased to include you in my military tradition and offer you a 214th commander's.
Thank you. I'm not good at that. Lieutenant Colonel Skarush, we have a relationship with the airman and her training squadron. They come around, they execute a lot of work for Delray Oaks, they work with the symmetry action group, and with our city manager, and they do outstanding work, and it's a great symbiotic relationship. Right now, we're trying to, there are a lot of them that don't have families, they can't, they don't have the money to fly back home, they're here by themselves during the Christmas period and the holiday season, and they're looking for, if there are any families who would like to open up their home for a meal, and bring these young men and women in, and just be part of a family for a short period of time, let the city manager know, and we'll get it. Okay, we're good. So you've got everybody taken care of?
In fact, we have more volunteers than we have members.
Wow. Again, thank you for that relationship, and also I thank everybody that showed up here. I mean, here it's the middle of the night, you're coming all the way down here, and we very much appreciate it. It's the fact you, you know, it's one thing, the fact you voted to come down here, spent your time, you come in here, for Dennis, that means an awful lot, so again, thank you. It's very much, it means a lot.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I think that concludes our external organizations. Okay, then I just want to, there were three organizations that presented certificates of recognition and appreciation to both you and Dennis. The first is, of course, the Monterey County Board of Supervisors, certificates of recognition to both of you, the city of Marina passed the council proclamation of appreciation to both of you, and the city of Seaside as well, and last but not least, the Central Coast Veterans Cemetery Foundation brought a certificate of grateful appreciation to you for your service in Monterey.
Thank you, that's really good. Okay, thanks. Now we go to the last part of it, public presentations, comments, anybody who'd like to make any comments, for Dennis or I, please take the podium, you have three minutes, please state your name, roughly, or otherwise, Tim, she hits all this as hard as some of the other guys.
Mayor, council? I had a breakthrough speech I brought up last night, and Martin Luther King, as I have a dream, was equal to it, until I got it, and I forgot everything. For a few of you who already know, I've lived in the city for 64 years, I think I've lived here maybe a year or two longer than Jerry. We were a little bedroom community until Ford Order closed, and then all hell broke loose, and there've been more committees formed, and all kinds of other stuff, and people fighting for forward property and whatnot, so it's gotten really complicated. Jerry's already mentioned, we've voted ourselves in the safety tax several times to keep us afloat, we owe Monterey Fire a lot of money, and I think even after our contract was up, we still owe money, so we've been doing very well, and it's nice to come into the city and see smiles on everybody's faces. Dennis, not only is a friend, but I highly respect you for not always agreeing with the council. You know, a lot of times, we just go with the flow, and I do respect that, a lot of times I didn't agree with that, but I respect you for not doing that. You've been invaluable to the planning commission and the council, and you leave big shoes, not just regular shoes, but dress shoes in your class act, and I'm sure that John Wolf will fill in very nicely. Having been in the Coast Guard, I want to make a small analogy, the city is like a ship, and Jerry has been the captain of that ship, who's led this city through, not in storm into the calm, he's just done a really great job, and with the captain, I understand, but he's been here. Let's see here, you stepped with the planning commission, we've already stated that you've gone through the ranks, and you've come to the head of the lines of lead. People, when you're a good leader, people will follow, you've done an excellent job. So I want to thank you, and for all your hard work, you've had a good run, I have a lot more to say, but a lot of stuff has already been said, so I won't do that. I'm excited for our future, it should be a great, great time. So thank you very much, Dennis, and Jerry, thank you.
George, thank you very much.
Scott Donaldson, for Ford Order Drive. I just wanted to publicly thank you, Jerry, and Dennis, for everything that you've done for the city, and also recognize your tremendous public service. You both served our country in the military for over 20 years, in virtually the same amount of time here in the city. Where most folks, most citizens can count their public service in months or years, you guys have done it in decades. So, thank you for your sacrifice, thank you for making the city a better place. Scott, thank you.
Jim Clark, Delray Oaks. And I have to take my glasses off, too, and in an effort to bring the holidays in a little bit, with George with his necklace of lights, and this written to O. Tannenbaum, "O. Edlin, O. Edlin, we'll miss you, oh, so much, Edlin. Now, it's guys like you, they are so few, if only folks would have talked to you. O. Edlin, O. Edlin, we'll miss you, oh, so, Edlin. And somehow you have managed to get the top pick to join the crew. O. Edlin, O. Edlin, we miss you, oh, so, Edlin. Our finances, they were so small, yet you have made our reserves tall. O. Edlin, O. Edlin, we'll miss you, oh, so, Edlin. Car break-ins and thieves, then you got us, and you top chief. O. Edlin, O. Edlin, we'll miss you, oh, so, Edlin. And one last thing, and out of the ditty, the greeter grass is in our city. O. Edlin, O. Edlin, we'll miss you, oh, so, Edlin."
Thank you, I'm grateful. Any other speakers? Going once, going twice, Dennis, last words?
Yep, I think that's enough.
Okay, I'm just, my little last words, it's been an honor to work and serve with everybody here, again, I've already thanked you in the dissection, you know how I feel about Jerry Edlin, he's done all the great things he's done, the city is in stop-notch, and the people that are observing the city, both in the elected and the current capacities, and in the actual staff itself are outstanding, there's no doubt about you there. Dennis, Mayor, going anywhere, we're still going to be around, we can even serve where we can, serve the city, and we'll make sure the city keeps going in the right direction. Other guys, it's been an honor to serve you, hope you all have a Merry Christmas, Happy New Years, and we'll see you around. Thank you very much. One other question, the gavel is passed to Vice Mayor, who's taking over the chair right now, and the new folks are swearing in.
Thank you, Dennis and Jerry. We have, now we have old business, we've got men, new business, we have seen a new council, not a project for guidelines, 120 section 15378. Nine, one would be swearing in Mayor Allison Kerr, councilwoman Pat Montell, and councilmember John Yagley.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
I have to go raise your right hand, for Pete. I state your name.
I, John Jerry.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
that I will support and defend
We will support and defend.
the Constitution of the United States
Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of California
and the Constitution of the State of California.
against all enemies
against all enemies.
foreign and domestic
foreign and domestic.
that I will bear true faith
that I will bear true faith
and allegiance
and allegiance
to the Constitution of the United States
to the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of California
and the Constitution of the State of California.
that I take this obligation freely
that I take this obligation freely
about any mental reservation
about any mental reservation
or purpose evasion
or purpose evasion
and that I loathe
and that I loathe
and faithfully discharge
and faithfully discharge
the duties upon
the duties upon
which I am about to enter
which I am about to enter.
Congratulations. Raise your right hand, please, and look after me. I state your name.
I, Allison Kerr.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
do solemnly swear or affirm
that I will support and defend
that I will support and defend
the Constitution of the United States
the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of California
and the Constitution of the State of California.
against all enemies
against all enemies.
foreign and domestic
foreign and domestic.
that I will bear true faith
that I will bear true faith
and allegiance
and allegiance
to the Constitution of the United States
to the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of California
and the Constitution of the California.
State of California. That I take this obligation freely
that I take this obligation freely. That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well
And I will well.
And faithfully discharge
And faithfully discharge.
The duties upon
The duties upon.
Which I am about to enter
Which I am about to enter.
Congratulations. So I just have a couple of words. I am so grateful that so many folks came out tonight to celebrate democracy. Please join me in congratulating returning council member Pat Montell and new council member John Diagno to the justice. As another round of applause to recognize and thank Mayor Edelen and council member Allyon from there many years ago. I look around the room, and I see many people that have worked hard to make this evening happen. I am truly humbled by all the efforts and the overwhelming support I received during the campaign and in the election. Thank you. We've come through a passionate election with clear messages from the voters of our community leadership. We have heard that you want your voices listened to and respected. We have heard that you want to help shape the vision of our city's future. We have heard that you want transparent decision-making processes. We have heard that you want to protect our natural surroundings and join our neighbors to combat greenhouse gas emissions. So we all have some work to do, and I stress need. I pledge to do everything I can to honor your vote for change. I take very seriously my responsibility to represent all of the citizens, whether I voted for them or not. But now the campaign is over, and it's time to find common ground and work for the benefit of our community. In return, I ask that each of you continue to be involved. I am already establishing avenues for that, such as forming ad hoc committees to come together to research and work on areas of common interest. Join me in Old Town Hall the first two Saturday mornings of the new year to continue our conversations and see where your town looks fit. I will continue these monthly meetings throughout my term. One of the most important things I've learned from our doorway and our kitchen table conversations over the last few years is how much we all treasure Delrayo's as our home. Those that have lived here for over half a century, to the new families that are just joining us, and everyone in between, all attracted by our special small-town ambiance. This is our common bond that makes our community such a wonderful place to live, and is the glue that will keep us moving forward together. Finally, I would be remiss if I didn't mention the honor I feel at being our city's first I love that the young people here will see women in power as being normal and not historic. Again, thank you for your support and your trust. Now it's time for us all to get to work. Would anyone like to say anything to welcome our new folks? Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay. So the first point of business is to announce we have two vacancies for the position of Administrative Hearing Officer. Councilmember Lisa Castle rotated off with her new position, and so if you would like to consider that, there's some information on our website. We're taking applications, and we'll make an announcement the end of January. Okay? Now, my favorite time of all, public comments. So anyone wishing to address the city council, and that is not carrying on the agenda, maybe so now, please identify your name, where you live, and please keep it to three minutes. Kim Shirley, Dr. Pliss. This election season was something we hadn't seen in our small town of Delrayo's. We had two very different ARL candidates, candidates voting for votes from residents from all corners of our town. We have residents who are lifelong DROs, all the residents who have recently moved into Delrayo's and are excited about being part of this fantastic town. This election, with its diverse views, ended up creating a city divided in its politics. Regardless of this divide, it has made me so happy, have the ability to express our differing views and opinions. I am so thankful for our democracy. I had never been actively involved in a campaign before our ARL campaign. I spent hours knocking on doors to inform voters regarding their choices. I was able to talk with neighbors about our hopes for our little town. Through these activities, one of the best things that came out of it was that I was able to meet wonderful people from all over the ARL. We have residents who are incredibly caring, thoughtful, and smart. I've come out of this election with new friends and increased love for our city. The ability to bring people together in our desire for change and a new direction is a wonderful thing. Yes, I am so thankful for our democracy. Now that the election is over, it's time to move forward. I'll admit, even though I'm extremely thankful for our democracy and our ability to voice our opinions, it's still uncomfortable feeling like they're divided ideas and a lack of trust among the residents. But let's be honest, we are diverse in our thinking, but let's remember that diversity is a good thing. It brings out different philosophies and allows people to see things from a varying perspective than their own. It can bring about solutions and relationships that we never thought possible. Now, as great as diversity is, what's even better is inclusion. Citizens want the ability to have an active role in our great city. Yes, I am deeply grateful for our democracy. So now with our reverse thinking and involve citizens, we have to bridge this divide. How do we do this? I have a couple of ideas. First, in order to bridge a divide, you need to find a common ground between opposing views. What can we both agree on? The second idea came from an interview I heard from Nina Jacobson, who's a very successful newbie executive. She was asked, how do you make it fit? Her answer was passion. She quote, "You've got to love the hell out of something." She didn't use a word how you'd be concerned, but she went there. When I heard that statement, though, I thought about our town of Delrayo's. There's a lot of passion here, and it wouldn't be wrong to say that there are a lot of people who love the hell out of this town. But guess what? That is our common ground. So to bridge this divide, my wish is that we use this passion that we all have and collectively work towards a common goal of continuing to make Delrayo's a great city. Regardless of who you voted for, I'm hoping that we can all listen with open hearts and open minds. Let's bridge this divide and put our passion towards the collective good. After a tough battle, it's hard to reach out and shake hands, but that is what we all need to do in shared service to this great town and its residents. Yes, I am so thankful for our democracy, but I'm also thankful for the dedication of our elected officials that we've foreseen them work together. I agree with you. Thank you.
So my name is Mira, and I am on VABRE, and I'm in ARL, both literally and to South Royal here for a couple of years, and I just wanted to say thank you so much for writing and pursuing this project and inviting me and my fellow friends that have no idea about politics at all. We don't know anything about it. We're just all newbies, and we're so thankful that you included us in this journey. I've learned so much from local policy to national scale, and you not only inspired me, but you also motivated me, and you were the best mentor I could have ever asked for for, you know, all that you've done, and all the passion that you brought, and the genuineness, and the kindness, and the compassion, and just thank you. I'm really happy to be here, and I'm really happy to see you.
Hi, Susan Rice, a client from Carleton Drive. I didn't prepare anything, but I just remember last year, Allison and I would get together on Friday for several hours and talk about our vision for Delrayo's and all the things that we wanted to do, like the farmers market and this and that. The other thing, it was quite a scary, but I'm so excited, so I can't wait. And I'll be putting on my boots and then hurry for ya.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilmembers, and wonderful staff of the City of Delrayo's. My name is Karen Arrojo. I come tonight bearing great tidings of enthusiasm and support from the Monterey County Commission on the Status of Women. Our president, our chair, Dionne Barra, cannot be here tonight. You can expect some formal correspondence to come in the early new year. I represent District Four. And Delrayo's is creating some history here. I don't know, I believe I mentioned it to Mr. Pick when I came in here one day on some other business, and I noticed the wall out there with the pictures. I thought, whoa, when the new mayor's portrait goes up, you will have four out of five seats occupied by women. And that is history-making, and as you said, it is setting the norm. This will not be a big deal to young girls who come before, who come next. They can see themselves sitting on the council, being mayor, being president of the United States. So thank you, Delrayo's, for, I don't know, by design or happenstance, for being such an important council in the county of Monterey. Because of your makeup, the Commission on the Status of Women will be keeping a particular eye on the council in Delrayo's with great happiness, because we know when there's a majority of women on a board, any decision-making board, and this is not to disparage our fine men, who we love very much, yet typically their decision-making and problem-solving is different. And so what women bring is very, very compatible with transparent processes, cooperation, collaboration, coming up with solutions that will affect the greatest number of people for the longest period of time. So we will be watching Delrayo's with great anticipation. We'll be looking forward to seeing the mayor out in the greater community, as is common for the mayor to represent the town throughout the region, and that has impact on thousands and thousands and thousands of other women out there, women to be girls, and we want to see them in leadership. The future belongs to them. So thank you, Delrayo's, on behalf of the Commission on the Status of Women, we commend you. We commend you, and look forward to seeing where the future points. Thank you.
Hello, Mayor Karen, councilmembers. My name is Alexis, and I'm on Portola Drive, and I've been up here many times, speaking my voice about issues that I care about, starting about four years ago, when I was on the traffic committee, and we were trying to get cars to slow down in Carleton. Many of us feel that the way it was handled was a huge, giant mess. We ended up with stripes that nobody likes, and still, you know, traffic has been calm, glad about that, but the process was a nightmare until Dino's hit got here. And I found a lot of people involved around here. Lenny Buckley ran for council. He was a good moderated voice on council, but a lot of us began to have some more issues with the CCA, that would give us renewable energy in this city, and recognize this climate change would happen, but we again had obstructionist leadership there. And a number of us were very upset about that, and in my household, we realized that in order to address that, we were going to need to change the city leadership. We can come and complain, and complain our heads off, and get on the record, time after time after time, but we needed somebody to step up to represent the views of the majority of citizens who live here in Delrayo's, who signed petitions, who believe in climate change, who believe in supporting what the majority wants here, regardless of the diversity of opinions. So I was pretty excited when you ran for mayor, and if somebody finally stepped up. And it's going to be a tough road, but I believe we're going to see more of these contests in the next couple of years. So thank you for stepping up. It's a lot of work, it's a lot of work to come, and I also want to thank the existing councilmembers for your service, and the outgoing folks as well.
Hello, City Council, Scott Morgan, Angeles Way, right next to the park. May I use the whiteboard for my comment?
Yes.
Sure. This represents Safeway. This is 218. I am proposing, right now, there's a single lane to exit Safeway. I would like to see a dedicated turn lane to turn right onto 218, and have a left turn lane onto 218. This would help the residents. There's always a congestion of cars here, and they've done it at Trader Joe's in Monterey with great success. I've measured the intersections, and it's 51 feet, two and a quarter, and there's plenty of room for trucks to still get in, and have two turn lanes here. Thank you.
Here we are, public comment is closed. There's no closed session, and there's no correspondence. The next meeting date is Tuesday, January 22nd, 2019, at 6:00. Meeting adjourned.